We'll go ahead and call the Stevens Point Area Public School District Board Meeting, regular school board meeting, from Monday, August 8th, 2016 at 6:30 PM to order. And Sue, could you do the roll call and verification of quorum, please?
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Ebo?
Here.
Ms. Erler?
Here.
Mr. Kanto's?
Here.
Mr. Levin?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Rannow?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
We have a quorum nine present.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item four is community partnership and recognition, and it comes appropriately right after the Pledge of Allegiance. We, as a district, want to acknowledge one of our homegrown heroes, Ben Proviser, who is a 2006 Spash graduate. He's heading to his second Olympics. He will be competing in Greco-Roman wrestling in the 85K white class at the Rio Olympic Summer Games. He also qualified for the 2012 Summer Games in London at the 64K weight division. So, good luck to Ben.
Yeah. Not sure the date on that, but trying to find it.
I think it's Friday.
Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we will move on to public comments, and we have one person signed up, Matt Chakowski.
President Erler, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak this evening. First, I'll introduce myself. I'm Matt Chakowski, a technology and engineering teacher at Ben Franklin Junior High. I have been with the district for five years and taught at Nikusa High School for eight years prior to that. I also have over 1,000 hours of experience working as a summer maintenance LTE with the Stevens Point District. What brings me here tonight is Agenda Item 82, Section J, the hiring of a new technology and engineering teacher. First, I must applaud you for you reaching out to Mr. Opera after not having any qualified candidate since the position was posted in April. Mr. Opera will make a great addition to our team of teachers. All everybody that I talked to from the Rochelle area is sad to see him go. Thank you again for doing what's right for students. Now, the problem. I currently hold an offer here under my paperwork from the Wausau School District for $50,584. I met with Superintendent Gerlock on Thursday to see if there's anything he could do to bring me up to the same level of pay as a new hire, which is less than the offer I hold in my hand. He said there was nothing he could do. I find this very disheartening. Since the new hire at Spash has just three years more experience than I do, none in the Stevens Point District, I hold two Project Lead the Way certifications and an alternative education license, besides my regular tech ed license. The new hire does not have any of these. This puts the new hire in eye on an even playing field, and I currently make 11 and a half percent less than the wage he was hired at. I have been told that it takes $50,000 to hire a technology education teacher. That's why we had to make that offer, and that we need to fill gaps that are open before the start of the school year. So, let's take a little look at the cost of the gap that will be created when I leave. $50,000 to hire a new teacher, that's what it takes. $4,545 to have a teacher trained in Project Lead the Way at Milwaukee School of Engineering. This does not include any compensation for that teacher's time while they are being trained. $1,200 for a mentor for that new teacher the first year, $600 for the second year, for a grand total of $55,745. This is all if there's even a teacher available. There are currently 38 tech ed vacancies on weekends as of five minutes ago. Well, probably 15 since I came in here. I have a hard time understanding how this makes fiscal sense, spending almost $56,000 when all I'm asking for is a fair salary of $50,000, which is less than the offer in my hand from the Wausau School District. I hope that you will show me that you value me as much as a new hire, and that you will do what is best for students, keep a well-respected, safety-conscious, veteran teacher in the classroom on September 1st, not a substitute. I hope the board does what's right, and I hope by Wednesday of this week I can still call the Stevens Point School District home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anybody else here this evening that did not sign up to speak but would like to address the board? No one is present. So, we will move on to... I'm going to have to grab an agenda from somebody else because this one doesn't have the second page on it. Thank you, Amy. No, yours doesn't either. All right. We'll move on to Item 6, Presentations, Information and/or Action. 6A is Wisconsin Association of School Boards' WASB Legislative Update.
Madam President, I'd just like to pass along, we're still in our legislative slow period for the year, so that may or may not be a good thing, depending on your point of view. However, coming up quickly is the WASB conference where they're going to be discussing the legislative policies that the WASB will be espousing, and timing is right for all of us to start to look at what WASB has already presented as far as existing resolutions, and see if there's anything that we would like to propose to add on to that. And if there is, if we could have that forwarded in whatever format that you can to the Policy and Legislative Committee so we can take a look at it and discuss it, and then bring any resolutions or resolution proposals back to the board. I did ask the Policy and Legislative Committee to go ahead and start to look at that so they have a little bit extra time. I would also ask my fellow board members and members of the administration to do the same. If there is something that you think that we should be advocating for, now is the time for us to present it to WASB for the annual review and see if it's something that everyone would like to buy into.
And just to add to that, I believe, I'm not sure, but I think it's the school news. It's the last magazine we got. We'll have some of that information with it. Board members should have received that. You might take a look at that. There might be something in there that will encourage you to support that specific thing, and you can send that on to the Policy Committee.
The full book is on the WASB website. It's very detailed. There's also an executive summary you can take a look at. You can glance through and see if there's something that looks like it matches what your interests are.
Can I just ask, so, we have the meeting on September 21st, but are you talking, is there a different meeting that you're talking about, or an additional one?
So, this is, the WASB has a Policy Committee.
A policy, okay, got it.
Right. Right, so separate and apart.
You're our representative today.
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
So, I currently sit on the WASB Policy Committee, and so, we are at the place, as Chris mentioned, in our latest school news, there was a page about how a board can choose to propose a policy for WASB to consider putting in their book. And it's basically their lobbying book. I mean, it's there, what do school boards want us to be talking to our legislature about moving forward, and what are our positions on things? So, if legislation is proposed, we can quick respond, and we're representing school boards across the state. And every year, school boards are, have the opportunity to propose a policy. The Policy Committee then meets for two nights, night and a day in September. That'll be down in Madison, I'll be down there, and we review all the policies submitted by school boards across the state. Last year, I think there were about 29, no, 31 that came in front of us. We then, in that first meeting, determine whether the policy is already covered in the booklet, whether policies can be combined, because, you know, there are instances where two school boards are bringing forward something very similar, and we work through those, that first set of two meetings. The second meeting is in November, it's actually up here. And at that meeting, the committee makes the determination of the exact language that should be proposed to the membership at our major school board meeting in January in Milwaukee. That's where all the districts have one voting member, and Dan is our voting member, who then vote on, can discuss and then vote on those policies that come before that full membership, and those that are approved go into the booklet moving forward. And it's a, as Dan said, it's a huge book, I mean, it's a lot of complexity to it. The Policy and Legislative Committee members have been given the opportunity to propose something. I think Jerry McKinley's taking a look at the book and probably determining whether something appropriate with respect to the voucher, whether she'd like us as a district to move that forward. What we told, what Policy and Legislative has been told is, bring those concepts to the Policy and Legislative Committee. If you feel that there's something that you would like our school board to forward, Policy and Legislative will review it and then recommend to the board whether they believe that's something that our board should pursue, and then we at the meeting in September will make the decision as to whether we want to forward them. What we would then need to do is we provide language of what the policy would be, the position would be, and then we would propose our rationale behind it. It's not, it sounds formal, but it's not necessarily formal, because what the committee will do, the WASB committee will do, will ensure that the language, exact language of the policy, is appropriate and consistent with what's existing in the booklet. Their legal team takes a look at it, and they, you know, make sure, so, we don't need the exact wording, but we want what our concept is and what our rationale behind it is. So, if any board members have any thoughts, and we've also asked Cabinet to take a look from our district's perspective and statewide perspective. If there's anything we want WASB to include in that booklet, this is our opportunity to be able to do that.
Will you be taking this up at the next committee meeting?
Correct.
And...
So, we'd like to have all the suggestions in, in time to, so we can include it in the packet and have everyone be able to read up on it.
Good, thank you.
And truly, they are, they're probably the largest lobbying group for school boards in the state. They're really good.
And for public educate, frankly, for public education.
Right. But they do a really good job, and Meg, you see how they take a look at all of them, and if they can use them. So, I think there'll be a lot of things on there that we'll want. We may not, we may not have to invent something or create something, but you never know.
And the Policy Committee at WASB does not make any decisions with respect to the merits of a proposal.
Right.
That's up to the membership at the annual conference in January. The committee just determines that, yes, this is something that we already haven't covered in our book, and, you know, maybe these need to be combined, but to bring them forward. So, anyway, so, we encourage any board members, if you have any thoughts, to either bring those thoughts to Craig to investigate with our Cabinet, because they're the, you know, they're the ones closest to, you know, what stumbling blocks may be existing with respect to the legislature now and moving forward. Sam?
I understand what you're saying. If somebody in the community has something they'd like to bring forward, they should contact a board member then.
The board member, Craig?
Yeah.
Yep, Superintendent. Mm-hmm. Okay. Only other, I guess I'd just like to add, tomorrow's our opportunity is citizens to vote, so I would encourage everybody to get out there and vote. Moving on to Item 6B, Communication Report, Sarah O'Donnell.
Hi, thank you. Communications Dashboard is included in your packet or on your online packet. Happy August. The temperature definitely changes in the district in August. It gets hotter outside, and things heat up for us as well. So, really exciting, we're having a lot of staff come back through, whether or not they are on contract. I have been very fortunate, had an opportunity to reach out to leadership team, our principals are back, who, to help try to connect us. We want to talk about, you know, we want families getting ready for school and how we are getting ready for school. So, had an opportunity to sit down with a number of staff across the district and really just prep some stories highlighting what it is that parents can do to get ready, and really what it takes as a district to get ready. I don't think that's something that people are often thinking about, right? There's lots of teachers in classrooms prepping, and transportation's doing a tremendous amount of work, food service, building grounds and maintenance has done a lot of work all summer, but continues to do that work as well. So, that's what we're really focused on for August from an external setting. Also, I do just want to mention Kevin Honeycutt is coming to town on August 25th. That is a free presentation up at Century, put on by Point and Common. Everyone is encouraged to attend. Childcare will be provided free of charge, and our own FFA students will be leading the charge on that. So, really excited to have them involved. And then, school's coming up, September 1st, so really excited for that, and internally looking definitely at that website conversion. We continue to build out that site. We're getting ready to start our staff trainings the week of August 22nd. So, folks will be able to start building and moving their content over, as well as we'll continue to move kind of that bigger district content over.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Sarah O'Donnell?
I'll underline the Kevin Honeycutt presentation. It's something that some of us as board members were able to see at WASB, and he is phenomenal. And his focus, he was in a very, very small school district, I believe in North Dakota, and his focus was how to use emerging technology, programs out there, free apps, to bring into the classroom, education tailored to individual student interests that invoke a lot of excitement and don't cost anything, or cost very little. He's incredibly creative, he's a lot of fun. This is not something just for educators. It's for parents, it's for businesses, it's, it's just an incredible opportunity, learning, educational opportunity for this community. It's free, and signup has been kind of slow, which is the case in summer, but I strongly encourage all the board members, everyone in our district staff, as well as the community to give a call and go see Kevin. Moving on to Item 6C, Superintendent's Report.
Well, good evening. I am just over a month in my new position, and I've been spending time meeting with many of you, staff members, as well as community members. I want to thank all of you for a warm welcome. To reiterate the board goals that we put together at our retreat last spring, adopt and support the implementation of a strategic plan, support and promote the mission of the district, and be advocates for public education in the Stevens Point School District, just reiterate mine as well. First and foremost, I'm not sure if this was on the list, but after I've talked to a number of people, included in my district goals, superintendent goals, are the implementation of a compensation plan, which I certainly am moving at the top of my list, the implementation as well with the board of a strategic plan, continue building relationship with all stakeholders, and to come up with the help of many, specifically Tom Owens', a capital improvement plan. You'll see that our back-to-school celebration is August 30th, 8 o'clock. I invite all of you, the back-to-school dates are on a handout in front of you on the table. I have Kevin Honeycutt down as well. I also had an opportunity to listen to him last January, and really, the guy's nothing shy of inspirational and outstanding, so I again encourage all of you that can attend. So, and reminder, excuse me, reminder of the WASB Fall Regional Meeting, September 21st in Rothschild. If you are interested in going, get ahold of Sue, and she'll get you registered. I will be attending that as well.
Just to add on to the back-to-school nights, Sam had actually given a call and indicated that in the past, the school board had made an effort, if they were available that evening, to maybe adopt a school or a couple schools, just to be able to be there and kind of say hi. I know some of us already have some connections with schools and probably are already planning on it, but if there are any school board members who'd like to make an effort to attend one or more of those meetings, just to kind of be there, to say, hey, school board's here, we support, we're excited about the beginning of the school year, please get ahold of Sue, and she's going to kind of keep track of who's going to be going where, and she'll send all, maybe send all of us out, that's it.
You're talking about this?
Yep, the back-to-school night, yep. Send all of us out, kind of a list of who's going to be at which schools that night, so we make sure that we don't have a quorum at any one school. Anyway, so, thanks for being there if you can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are going to move into our Item C, which is Consent Agenda, and that is A, the minutes from July 5th, 2016, regular July meeting, and B is approval of the schedule of monthly bills.
Move for approval as printed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Moving on to Item 8A, Business...
Did you do minutes?
Oh, I'm, yeah, that was Consent Agenda. That's what I just did.
You did the whole thing, okay, got it.
Yep, yep. So, actually, I will ask the boards, I'd like us to move to policy, because I'd like us to approve that method that we just used formally. It is something that we're allowed to do in Robert's Rules, so we legally are able to do it, but what we're going to be taking up with policy is actually within our policy noting that. So, why don't we move right to that, and then we'll be able to proceed with the agenda using it, with it as an actual policy of our district. So, we'll move to Item 8F1A, 100 Series 183 Voting Methods, with the board's indulgence.
Madam President, Policy 183 is simply acknowledges what we would expect of the board when they vote. As you said, it's implicitly acknowledged that the board is allowed to use a voice vote. However, for, some people read very strictly into the policies, and we wanted to remove any doubt in whether or not that the president is allowed to use a voice vote to record the vote and the desire of the board. So, Policy 183 is geared to do that. And reserving the right to continue my comments, I would move to adopt Policy 183 as presented.
Second. Any discussion or comments?
I will note that at any point in time, if I as president call for a voice vote, if any member prefers it to be a roll-call vote, they have the ability to request that, and then we will do a roll-call vote. So, any, any member has the ability to request that, and then we will do so. Okay, now we will move back to Item...
Vote on it?
Oh, yeah, I guess we have to vote on it, sorry. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Posed? Okay, thank you, sorry. Anyway, I guess it's an August meeting. Moving into Item 8A1, with Business Services, the Business Services Committee Chair Report, Amy.
Skipping over the chair report and just give a little synopsis per item as we go. Revision of the 2015-16 budget. As we read, to comply with the state statute, changes must be approved by a two-thirds majority of the boards. We would need a roll-call vote on this one. Within 10 days of approval, the board must make the changes. Okay. So, this is really just updating the information that we had previously been given and finalizing, is it, finalizing, Tom's abandoned me?
Oh, he's back there nodding.
Finalizing our 2015-16 budget, which has closed, and we are now into our 16-17 budget. So, I would move to approve the amended 2015-16 budget as presented.
Second. Okay. Any discussion or questions? Can I just ask?
Yep, Tom? I appreciate a question.
Bill?
Bill?
Bill. Tom's... Hey, I'm just curious, on these additional dollar amounts that we got, revenues and other financing sources, intermediate, $67,000, another one, and then it says expenditures and destruction. Can you just give us an idea of what that consists of?
When the budget is adopted in October, the original budget, we don't know if somebody's going to give the district a gift.
Did we get a gift for $67,000?
Well, we got, the gifts are actually, on the first line it says local sources. Those would be the changes there. There's $12,800. Those were gifts given by somebody that were going to be spent all in the 15-16 year. The ones under the $67,000 is state grants. Well, there's some state grants, we don't know, general ones that we don't know what they're going to be, what, you know, how much they're going to give us, how much is going to be allowed. So, when we budget in, in October, we budget zero, because we can't budget for something we don't know about.
Sure.
So, once, once we get finalized grants from the state, the first ones are from the state, the second ones are from the federal government, we then update the budget to increase the revenue and increase the related expense that's going to be spent.
I, I get that. I thought maybe you might be able to just give us a couple of examples of what those were, that's all. But it sounds like you're saying it's a variety of things.
Right, there is, there's a half a dozen different state grants that are included in that, in that number.
Okay. No, that's fine. I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, I just was wondering if you could, if you'd give us a highlight.
I don't call each one.
If we got a $67,000 gift from somebody, that's...
No, no.
Okay, all right.
We may have. Most of those go into Fund 21, because they're going to be spread over more than one fiscal year. If they're going to be all spent within the same year, we can go through Fund 10, because it has an effect on our equalized aid if we go over different years.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, thanks. Any other questions? Could we have a roll-call vote, please? Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebo?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Cast is 9-0.
All right, on to the next one, 8A3, Compliance with Federal Funds Procedures. So, basically, our business services, we received this manual regarding how we spend and how it's decided, and checks and balance regarding federal funds. So, we had to update our policy to be in compliance with that manual. So, everything that's been changed in the manual is taken word for word from the federal funds procedural manual and put in there so that auditing finds us to be in compliance with that. There's nothing that would really raise any alarms. Basically, most of it is putting in a check where a check needed to be put in, and making sure somebody is reviewing before approving, and make sure everything follows along that path. So, along with that, I would move to approve the district federal funds procedural manual and approve Policies 522.4, 664, 672, and 690 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Second, back Chris. Any questions or comments with respect to this? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries.
8A4, Summer Food Service Report. Give me a moment here.
So, so, we talked about as we set the agenda, oftentimes reports go to committee and don't necessarily come to board, but where those reports, you know, have some good meat in them and also have some, some real good stories about the wonderful job that our staff is doing, I think it's important that we bring them here to board so that we can recognize that, and, and the public who may, who doesn't have the opportunity through committees to see that will be able to hear about the great job and the great things that are happening in this district. So, we've got a couple items on the agenda tonight that are strictly reports, not action for board, but that, that I think that we felt were good for us as a board to just, again, acknowledge and allow the public to be aware of.
So, our Summer Food Service Program Report, this is our fifth year of having summer lunch served at our school. So, if the school has a 50% or higher free or reduced lunch rate, we can offer them lunch over the summer. And so, if you look at our numbers from 2012, which was the pilot year, up through this year, and worse, this year we served 1,849 meals on average per day for breakfast and lunch. And you'll, if you do look at the total numbers, it is less than last year, however, there was one less day of service this year. So, our numbers do continue to go up. We had it at Spash, both junior highs, and then also Madison, McKinley, and Jefferson, and JFK, or John Kennedy this year. So, it, it is growing, it's a great thing for our students. A lot of kids who are on their own in the summer can go someplace and get a good breakfast and lunch. and lunch, paid for by the district or by federal funds.
So, I want to note, again, Lori Epstein and her staff do an incredible job about this. The numbers have been growing. This is a program that is geared towards summer school students. Again, the meals are free. But the interesting thing about this program is the federal government allows anyone to come to that site to have breakfast or lunch. And we, as a district, are seeing students that are within those neighborhoods that may not be at summer school, but they are coming for nutritional lunches. Again, it's dollars through the federal government. It is not a direct cost to the district. But as everybody knows, a hungry child is not going to be able to learn and not going to be able to concentrate on what's happening in the classroom as well as a nourished child. So, it's a wonderful program, and Lori and her staff do an incredible job of providing delicious food for these students, so.
And this year, our district saw the first decrease in the free and reduced lunch rate in nine years. So, we went down from 38.6 free and reduced to 36.9% free and reduced lunches. And there is a graph included in our packet.
And I just want to say, too, I've heard from a number of parents that so appreciate this. And Meg said it twice, but I'm going to say it again. This organization and implementation of this plan, Lori Epstein and her staff do a tremendous job just getting this all in place. And as successful as it is, and the food that's served really, really benefits our community. So, thanks to the federal government and to the district for doing that. I think our kids and our parents and our community really benefit from that.
Okay. You have one more.
Oh, yeah, the First Trans software presentation update. This is Brad, the Transportation Director. Brad, I'm sorry, I don't know how your last name is.
And so, this is another report coming forward. And what we ask Brad to do is really give us a little bit of an update and tutorial about what parents are going to be expecting as they move into this year, because there's going to be a change. This is the first year that the postcards aren't being mailed out. And we want parents to be aware of this new process and to make sure that they are proactive about moving into the school year.
So, with the help of Sarah, she put in the link for my, the department website on the main webpage. But first off, Channel 7 News from Wausau has been coming down this past... Last week, they came down about the Amber Light Initiative, which takes effect August 16th. And they're also coming down this Friday to see a live demonstration during route time of the MyStop app for news coverage. That's the only thing I can't provide you right now, because it has to be during the route time for it to work. Okay? So, parents will be asked to be notified of bus stops through our website. 4K students will still get the letter in the mail. Also, our parochial partners will also get the letter in the mail due to how embedded the system is for their schools. It's basically set up for our public school boundaries, so it's a little bit difficult to search and get their bus information appropriately. So, after discussing with a few people in the others, the private sector, private side of that we deal with, it was best to come up with a different solution. And we were going with the letter option with them and explaining how to use the new system through that letter. So, the most... So, parents would have to go into the school district website and just scroll down to the district news area and see the 16-17 bus routes for more information, hyperlink. They would just have to click on that, and that pulls up to our departmental website. We updated it, saying that bus route information will be available next week. We have finished the routing for this year. We're just doing tweaking to the routes with any ads or deletions from Skyward and adding our transfers this week also. So, on the left-hand column, you see is the sub-menu. It says routing information, MyStop app download information, the policies, the bus registration, open seat registration, bus stop review form, all for this coming year. At the bottom, you see school staff requests field trip route information. That's also part of the First Trans website, which is a tool that we can communicate much more efficiently with the staff of schools with bus route information and online field trip requests. So, when a parent comes onto our departmental website, they would just have to click on the routing information link, and it pulls up this page, which just basically says the same thing on the main page, that bus route information will be available next week. We're proud to present this tool for them. And then we have screenshots of someone, of instructions of what it looks like, so they have an idea of what they're getting into. So, they would just have to click on this link right here, and it pulls up a new page of a boundary search. It takes a while, a little bit, but at times it'll just pop up. It depends what time of day. So, it comes up as a simple search. This parent would have to put in the grade and the address information. So, I'm just going to take 4th grade, and I'm just going to use my own address. I don't know if that's going to be wide. They don't have to do the zip code at all, because our system is only tied into the 54481, 54482, and the clover, 5467. So, after they type that in, they just click the find transportation info box down here, and it's pulling up through the database. As you can tell, the simple search is hidden by the process requesting. As you can tell, it says, "Simple search the grade, address," and it says, "The school/transportation information." The school of residence is Madison Elementary for this 4th grader. You attend Madison Elementary School. It tells you how far you live from the school, which is the purple icon of this map. Then it says, "On your way to school, you do ride to meet that criteria of either hazardous area or outside of two-mile radius. You have to walk .04 miles to your bus stop," which is well within our policy. And it gives you the stop assigned, which is West Jackson at West Cornell. Where bus number, which is not available and arrives at not available, it's purposely hidden right now. So, due to the times change constantly for the first couple of weeks of school or right during this process, same information is provided on the way home to school. And then it provides a map. Parents can go onto this map with their mouse and scroll in and see where exactly the bus stop is at, which is iconed with the bus and then their home within with that icon of a home. Okay? Questions?
That's great. That's incredible.
So, we used it during summer school. Summer school was more, we had to use advanced search, so we had pictures of it. We had great feedback from parents, saying it was easy to use. They get their information a lot faster than waiting for the letters the week before school or the couple of days before school. Then, we also posted on our website, the download directions for the MyStop app, which you saw pictures in June on Sarah's report of communication. So, we have the MyStop iPhone app download and the Google Droid smartphone apps for their use.
Do you know approximately how many people have downloaded the apps?
I do not know, but I can always ask First Trans. They may have it count.
Have you been inundated with questions on how to get it working or...
And for summer school, I was. We had a little glitch, but then I figured out what it was, and I fixed it right away. We had a few people come in, and I did it for them and showed them. What I've heard from the ones that were using it during summer school is they appreciated and liked it a lot. We can also send out push notifications to the general public that's on the app. It's not route-specific, but it's the broad base. So, if I have a bus running 15, 20 minutes late, I can push a notification to everybody on the system, noting what's going on. If we ever do go opt the one-hour, two-hour delay for inclement weather, I can set the system to adjust that so the routes would show real-time information also on that app. Okay? Questions, comments?
Just one question. Are we still offering bus service for that subdivision across McDill Avenue for the kids that go to McDill? That they live close enough, they should be walking, but...
HH is deemed a hazardous area. Yes, we are still transporting them.
I just wanted to verify that.
So, for inclement weather, snow days in particular, will you be able to send out an email or, you know, a text message or something to people that have the app?
Yes, a push notification.
And you'll be able to say, "School, buses are two hours late," or "School is canceled today," or...
Well, that's going to come from more of the Sarah and superintendent's office. I can push out... I won't be doing that, because they have a better grasp of getting everyone. I just have certain people that I'll have.
You get to make the decision, though.
Okay, that's...
We'll talk about that.
I've never heard that one, so...
A future conversation between the two of you.
We're off topic.
So, I can use that for that aspect also. I know summer school, the first day I did test it on my own phone to see if it worked to say, "Welcome to summer school," you know. One bus did run 15 minutes late, so I did push that on the first day of summer school. But what I heard was people were enjoying it and felt safe and secure with that app at hand.
That's great. That's just wonderful.
Cool. Well, and again, to correct me if I'm wrong, but this app will allow a parent to go in and figure out where the bus is and what time it's going to be picking their child up. So, especially during the winter, if it's 10 below zero, they're going to know in real time the minute that that bus is going to be, or, you know, pretty close to when that bus is going to be coming to their stop.
Correct. In the pictures that Sarah presented in June, it has the route highlighted in green and then this big yellow arrow, which is the bus. And on the bottoms, it says, "Bus so-and-so is at this generalized location. It should arrive at your stop at 8:23 a.m." Now, if it misses your stop, it will tell you the bus missed the stop. And then that's when they should call us, and we'll reroute the bus back to them.
That's great. Excellent. Tell them about the fact that if a parent questions whether or not the bus came by and stopped, I think that's really cool.
Barb has come in and seen this. We have a big screen in our main office where we keep the office GPS, which I can log in right now and show you.
Tricks. Tricks of the trade.
This is the First Trans suite onscreen, which reads to MyStop. Also reads into the MyGeo tab, which is the other part of this application. So, this is live. As you see, all those piles of numbers and triangles are our buses.
They're piled up.
And transportation. They're all over, scattered. You know, the gray means they haven't been talking. The yellow means they've talked about the last 30 minutes. So, these do come on and off throughout the night. So, I can pull up... I have to think of what bus was used during summer school, so hang on one moment. The red stop arms are the stops assigned, so that tells us whenever the bus activates the red warning lights and stop arm and door out. It also records the process of the bus, so we can actually look at it in history and push play right here. And you'll see, if I speed it up a little faster...
I don't know.
There should be a triangle moving. It's moving too slow. I don't know where it's at, but hang on.
There it is.
So, it's moving around the path. We know what's going on. It's telling us the speed on the bottom, right turn, left turn off, all that directional stuff that they're doing. It's a great tool that we've enjoyed watching and getting some details of what's going on.
Like big...
Because during the routing software, we can take speeds that they do and do an average to calculate the correct timing of our routes. And we did about 15 of our routes last week to make sure the timing was on spot and they were on spot. So, we're pretty good.
Listen, we've got Barb busy all day. Likes this kind of stuff.
So, what you're saying, so like for me, when my son was going to school and I'd send him out to the bus stop a little late, and the bus would have already gone past, and then I would call in and say, "The bus never came here. You guys are going to be able to at least let the parent know that, yes, the bus actually did come there."
We've already started implementing that in December, once we started getting the GPS installed. And we told them exactly when, what time. And some of them were not happy, some of them were happy. And we told them then that this is going to be more broad, they can actually view it, but this is what we have now.
Excellent. Okay.
Great tool.
Any questions or comments?
That's fabulous. That's just fabulous. Although I do feel like there should be some Pac-Man.
That's what it looks like.
Thank you, Brad. Thanks, Sarah, for putting that together for us.
And can I just say, Brad started working on this about a little more than a year ago. And you've been working on this and working on this and working on this. And there were some of us that were a little skeptical. And this is really, this is a great end result. I'm looking forward to, you know, about two weeks into school when everything calms down. Should be just terrific.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, we'll have Brad come back and talk to us in September, and he can give us, he can give us an update. And then maybe we'll...
Leave him alone.
He'll be relieved from the duties of having to come to committee every month and board every month to report to us. So, anyway, thanks for all your hard work.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Okay, so we're moving to item 8B, Educational Services. First item is Educational Services Committee Report. Trish Baker.
So, a lot of what we talked about at our committee meeting is going to be covered in a few moments, I think by presentations, at least by Sarah, anyway. Or at least, I'm assuming she's going to be talking about the parent survey or the school survey. But I just want to talk a little bit. We only had two things on our meeting agenda last week. The first was professional development goals, and that was really a lot of fun. We had a couple of principals come and provide information on professional development. Ryan O'Rourke from, I think I'm pronouncing that right, Ryan O'Rourke from Washington Elementary came and talked a lot about the English language and Core Ready materials that are going to be kind of the focus of professional development days at the elementary schools. And one of the things that he focused on, which I thought was really interesting, is he said there hadn't been, previously hadn't been school-wide, I'm sorry, district-wide goals and a plan that was district-wide for some of these things. One of the things we learned about, a couple of things we learned about were consultants that are coming into the district. August 17th, a consultant, which of course he gave me the name, I think it's Brian Johnson, is coming in to kind of do a train, the trainer for, again, it has to do primarily with reading, but to train our instructional leaders. And then they will be able to go out and sort of run these professional development days, if I, hopefully I'm saying this all right. Amanda Mayo from McKinley got up and talked about guiding, reading, and some of our reading specialists and talking about, she talked about a program that the district is bringing in where a consultant named Sandra Weaver will be here for 10 days this fall. And she will be working with all of the elementary schools on supporting our reading specialists in particular. And that was really interesting. She was really, you could tell from her enthusiasm about this particular mentor coming in and working with our teachers, how enthusiastic she was, how much confidence she had that this would be really great for our students and great for our educators and educating our educators. And then the other piece that we talked about were the, or was, sorry, the school perception staff and parent survey information. And I don't want to take any, you're going to present, right? Okay. So, I don't want to take anything away from Sarah. I will say, though, the one point that I do want to make is, we did receive, I think, I think everybody received an email asking for comments. And there is one section of the climate survey that has for comments for parents and educators. to be able to put in specific comments. Those were not included. They were not included on purpose. There's too many of them, for starters, the second reason. There's, I think Sarah told me, I think there's 8,000 typically. Let me just say, the comments that are made are listed in the thousands. So that's the first piece, is that it's just simply a lot of information. But the other piece is, a lot of it would have to have been redacted with names and a lot of specifications or specific information that wouldn't have been appropriate to share with the public. So the district didn't provide those comments last year, is not providing those comments this year. And then I think lastly, with regards to those comments, the comments are available to the principals, and the principals use those to help develop their goals for their specific buildings. So that's really the goal of the comments, is for administration to use, which is how they use them. So we had a great meeting. It was very good. I thought we'd be done in about 35 minutes. We ended up going into the HR committee by about five minutes because the conversation, there were so many questions and such a lengthy conversation. So that's pretty much an overview. And I think at that point, or at this point, I would just move on to the next point.
So just one point. Trish, I was at the meeting and Ryan talked a lot about that, the wonderful collaboration throughout the schools, elementary schools, with respect to these district-wide kind of goals and objectives with respect to that curriculum. He did note, though, that there will continue to be flexibility, because our schools, each have their different characters. And different schools need different things. So the overall principles and the meat of what's going to be happening will be district-wide. And staff is very excited about the collaboration, the excitement in it. But there will continue to be that ability of educators to work within their buildings to the special needs and requirements for the population that they're serving. So I thought that was interesting, that in a way we're coming together in that global way, but we're also realizing that each of our students and each of our schools have their own unique needs and things that need to be addressed. And then I just want to make one comment about the survey. The other huge reason that the comments aren't being provided is that people who were asked to do the survey were promised confidentiality and anonymity. And that's where Trish talks about redacting. So in the event those comments came forward, we would need to remove any specific information, which is really the meat of what it is those comments are. So thank you. So you want to go ahead and do your actions now?
I don't think that they're, well, I guess the academic, student academic standards notification? Well, I'll move to approve the academic standards that are listed in item, the memo regarding 8B2 for the 2016-2017 school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a requirement, we as a district are required to, as a board, approve these each year and then publish them out to the community so that they have access to those.
This is new, beginning the 1517 budget.
Any discussion or questions on these? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed, motion carries. Okay. And then item 8B3 is the school perception staff and parent survey. And again, this is another report that is important for both the board and the community, full board and community to be able to learn about.
Thank you. All right. Before we get started, I do just want to address briefly the comments issue as well. We did also receive copies of the email requesting some of the information from the comments. And while they are confidential, we did see some recurring themes occur through the comments. I did have the opportunity to read all of them. So we have provided for you two slides. One is specific to survey, or, excuse me, to staff, and one is specific to parents, to give you some of those overall themes so that you are privy to them as well. We don't believe that that is not staying with the nature of what we thought, or what we told people we would do with the survey. So we're going to take a look at the, ooh, that's not cool, staff survey first. I'm going to put that down and push it as we go. That mouse is going to drive me nuts. So we conducted our school perception surveys in May of 2016. This is, I believe, the third or fourth year that we have specifically used school perceptions to go ahead and do this survey for us. All staff members were sent an email invitation to take the survey online. And while it is just a point-in-time survey, right, it is very much a perception and a reflection of how individuals were feeling at that time. It is how individuals were feeling at that time. So we do want to take the survey results very seriously. Your respondent information. I should note, too, this is slightly different from the information in your packet. Due to the length of time that we took at the Educational Services Committee, I wanted to make sure that we really had an opportunity to hit the high notes. So it is a slightly condensed version, but the entire reports are included in your packets. So here is your representation of staff who took the survey, where they're at across the district. You see a fairly good representation based on where our staff actually are, as well as we see a really nice representation of who our staff are. So these numbers are falling right within what we would expect based on the overall makeup of our staff. Although we did just see that 51% participation rate, it is a good representation within that 51%. And again, this falls, I actually looked this one up, that 46% is accurate. That falls right in line with the current makeup of the tenure of your staff, as well as the rest, except the no response. What grade would you give us? So as we can see here, staff, 42% would give the district a C. And how would you rate the district compared to neighboring public school districts? And again, we see these numbers not where we'd like to see them. We want staff to obviously be thinking that our district is better or much better than neighboring districts. The survey, what we see here is, as we go through the next set of slides, each of the questions build into an index. So these questions are all specific to how are staff feeling about change readiness? And a few things I want to bring your attention to. We see across the top the strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. They did not have an option of a neutral, so they had to land, and that's on purpose. We really wanted folks, we really wanted to know, do you agree at all, or do you disagree? So they didn't have that option of a neutral. When we take a look at that strongly agree, agree percent, that's one way to kind of see where folks were at overall. And then when we look at the average, if we were going to see all staff agreeing with something, we'd see that 4.0. So that's two ways that you can kind of look at that information and gauge where folks were at with these answers. I'm not going to go through and read them. I do have a couple highlighted for you. Ones, to me, when I look at this, it's, our district has a culture of open dialogue around difficult issues at 40%. That would be one to me that I think we could certainly address and needs to be addressed moving forward. Student achievement, staff over and above think that, overall, the school offers high-quality academic programming at 88%. Engagement, my work directly contributes to overall success of the district, 94%. That's a really good answer for an engagement. My concern is, as we start to move down, we start to see those numbers not stay as high. Communication, I've red circled a couple here that I think are specific to perhaps what the board can take a look at and specific to what we can take a look at as an overall district. Board policies and procedures affecting me and my work are available and clearly communicated, 56%. We can do a lot better than that. I have a good understanding of the plans and goals of the district. I circled that one, not necessarily because it's at 42%, but because looking forward with the board speaking to doing some strategic planning this year, that's a really good opportunity, not only to clarify what those goals are for the district, but to make sure that they're well communicated to staff and community. And then I feel the district honestly communicates with me about important issues at 39%. How would we rate communication from the following? Again, I red circled the board, not to call you out, but just to show there's an opportunity for improvement there. Certainly some tactics we can employ to make sure that the communication coming from this level is what the staff wants. And I think the first question would be, what is it that the staff needs from the school board to feel like that number can go up? Culture, we saw really, really high marks throughout the survey and high compared to other districts that are of similar size and budgets relative to how folks are feeling for their buildings versus how they're feeling for their districts. So when we survey them on questions specific to how they're feeling in their schools, in their buildings, marks are really high. Engagement highs there, culture is very positive there. As we start to come back to those questions about the district, that's where we tend to see those marks become a little bit lower. Staff majority think our academic expectations are just right. And work environment, again, this, I think, reflects that previous statement that within those buildings, within those smaller communities, if you will, instead of that whole district, folks are feeling fairly positive. This one is red circled, Trish talked about this, too, at the committee meeting, that I feel valued by our community at that 57%. I'm not sure how we tackle that one, but it certainly is disheartening to me to take a look at that and see a group of folks in the community working for the community who don't feel valued by the community. So taking an opportunity to look at that as well this year and see what it is, if there, I look at everything from a communications lens. So is there something from a communications lens that we can use and utilize to see how that can be affected? Health and wellness. Development and recognition. I feel weird just going through them and not reading them. I can read them, but... Compensation and benefits, this is one of those overwhelming themes that came through the survey, and I don't think that anyone is surprised by that. They certainly shouldn't be surprised by that. Overall, I am satisfied with my pay, 36%. My pay is in fair relation to my job responsibilities, 30%. Pay practices are administered consistently for all employees, 21%. So there's a significant amount of work to do there. Building leadership, again, building leadership really were the shining stars, aside from overall staff when we get to the parent survey. But from a staff survey, it really showed that principals are respected within their buildings, are doing a great job within their buildings, and are moving them forward relative to staff and student achievement. They have the opportunity to select up to four of the most important satisfactions relative to their job. And no surprise, again overwhelmingly, we see that compensation and salary right at the top. Overall satisfaction with the district, which is a little bit different than we saw in that first kind of grade the district. Our community supports education at 60%. Overall, the district has improved over the last year at 58%. And I am satisfied with financial management of the district at 26%, which again, I think is coming back to that teacher, not just teacher, but that compensation concern. So survey comment themes, this is something new. We did not talk about this at committee. So I did go through and just go back through my notes and kind of pick out those things that I saw over and over again. And I've outlined some strengths and some opportunities for the district as a whole. So strengths, there's a very positive culture within buildings. I read and reread and reread the things that I like about working in our district because it's just, it's an anonymous survey, but I wish from a communication standpoint that I could find out who wrote just these amazing things about their colleagues and how they are supported. And not even necessarily to communicate it, but to let other folks know how they feel. I mean, it was just, it was very positive. Building leadership, again, they do feel valued amongst their colleagues, not necessarily at a district level, specifically at a district level they do not. And then opportunities for students, over and over again, talking about the opportunities that this district provides for our students. Opportunities for us, compensation plan, or a lack thereof, was very, very much a thread throughout the comments. Equity in pay came up quite a bit. The overall morale, right, so just generally not feeling great about where they were at at that time of that survey. And then the connection between the district and the buildings was really apparent to me. So looking at, I feel comfortable about this, but I don't understand what happens over here. I don't understand why this decision was made. And sometimes I think, unfortunately, that's kind of the way it's going to be when you have separate spaces. But I also do think that there is an opportunity there to try to do some of that kind of bringing back together so that we are a district. Do you want to go right to the parent survey? Okay. So the parent survey was also conducted in May, very much the same way that the staff survey was. Again, done completely through school perceptions. So it's kind of nice. We just kind of had to send the emails after we got the survey. Respondent information, so where are their students attending? Again, we see a really nice breakdown across the district, so we are seeing a representative group of parents, as well as representative at their grade level of their students. So we're not just seeing a chunk of elementary parents or a chunk of secondary parents. We really are seeing opinions across the board. See some identification there. They were asked some general communication information. How would you like to receive school information? Excuse me, overwhelmingly, we see email. Digital is really kind of where it's at. I imagine as we move into the MyStop app and the district app, which will also launch when that website is updated, we'll continue to, that trend's not going away. Parent and teacher conferences, though, really, really high. And I am excited about that and think that that is wonderful because it means that those parents really are valuing that face-to-face time with their teachers. It means they're walking into schools, they are taking the time to ask questions, taking the time to meet the educators, which I think shows a very involved parent community. General information on why they visit the district's website, no surprises here. We do surveys throughout the year as well, and this is what we see overwhelmingly. Elementary schools, we did take the opportunity to, that thing is driving me nuts, we combined. So these are all elementary schools. We take all of their information and put it together, and then we did the same for the secondary, so we're not kind of calling out one or the other, but have an opportunity to see how they're performing overall. And as you can see, they're doing very well. I feel welcomed at my child's school at 90%. I thought that was a wonderful response, as well as my child has a positive relationship with at least one adult at school at 98%. And we know it's really important for that student to feel that they have that opportunity, they have that person that they can go to should they need something. Parent and teacher conferences provide productive communication at 90%. So again, we're seeing that those parent-teacher conferences, that FaceTime with the education expert is really valued by our parents. And then school facilities are clean and well-kept at 97%. And then there's a healthy culture at our school at 90%. So parents are feeling very positive relative to elementaries and what's happening there for students. Oh, I don't have my glasses on. 76% believe academic expectations are just right, they are where they should be. Overall use of technology at my child's school, again, I want to say that says 79%, but please don't quote me because I can't quite see it.
Looks like a 75.
75. And moving on to secondary schools, again, I highlighted this because I love the question. Even though I may not always agree with decisions, the principal is doing what it takes to make our school successful at 91%. It's a very high mark compared to other districts that we look at. Again, we see parents feeling very welcomed in the secondary school. We see them having a positive relationship with at least one adult at the school. And again, school facilities being clean and well-kept. There's lots of other really good stuff in there, too. Secondary parents also believe academic expectations are just right. And again, overall use of technology at my child's school. And then they were asked some questions about the district as well, and I've red circled two of them. I think we have some opportunities for communication there, opportunities for improvement. The district is run effectively, and the district has effective... The district is run effectively, and the district has effective financial management. I think as we continue to see this board move forward, we will continue to see those numbers increase. Overall, how satisfied are you with the school district? We see very satisfied and satisfied. So we have parents who feel and know that their students are receiving a world-class education here in Stevens Point. When we look at survey comment themes for parents, strengths, opportunities for students, by and above, the number one comment that we saw, you know, whether it was academic, athletic, or other extracurricular, lots of value there for the wealth of programming available to students. Dedicated staff, teaching staff specifically, but also support staff, often mentioned as well. And they felt welcoming and safe, that school was a safe place for their students to be, and that they felt welcomed when they were there, both families, parents, and students. Opportunities, class sizes came up. You know, they want smaller class sizes. I don't think that anyone would argue that. Obviously, that's a financial question. Website came up, which, you know, we've all seen it, we're working on it, we're going to get there. And then increased communication opportunities. So just a lot of talk about, you know, I want to know more about this, or more about that, or, you know, can the school send more information? Why isn't it counter? So not necessarily anything really specific, but there was definitely a theme that folks are looking for information and wanted to be able to find it quickly. And that's my presentation. Yeah?
So I think one of the things that spurred quite a lot of conversation at the committee meeting was the, what I see as just this gigantic chasm or disconnect between these two statistics. One, off of the parent survey, I would recommend my child's school to a friend 91%. 91%. I mean, we've got parents that just feel fabulous about our school district, but then you look at the staff comments, and the staff comment, I feel valued, I feel valued by our community at 57, 57%. You know, that's, that, there's a disconnect there. And I think that we as a board, as Sarah has so eloquently put it, it's an opportunity for us to do some reaching out and repairing and, and, and deal with that. Because clearly, those two don't fit together. But by and large, it's really positive. I have a question for you, which is a little sensitive, but you kept out one slide that you shared with us at committee.
Sorry.
The race?
Oh, and I did not mean to do, was not on purpose.
So, so I'll just kind of summarize from the committee packet. Of the parents that responded, 87% were white, 5% no response, 3% Asian or Pacific Islander, 2% multiracial ethnic, 2% Hispanic, 1% Native American, and less than 1% black. And my comment and the discussion that we had at committee level was that that didn't accurately reflect our population. And, and I feel that that's an opportunity in and of itself, even though it may not be identified, the, you know, the sin of omission is here, that we, we don't, we haven't heard from those people. For whatever reason, we haven't heard from them. And I think we're missing that. And that that needs to be a goal for next year, to figure out a way, and I'm not sure what it is, because we want to continue to, you know, not have people do it twice or anything, but, but we, we as a district have a duty to hear from everybody, or at least make that opportunity available.
And we do offer, and I apologize for leaving that slide out. We, we do offer translation services for both our Hmong population and our Spanish-speaking population. It's a very passive offer, though, so that might be an opportunity right there where we can perhaps find some better ways to engage those two sets.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, but I think that our, our population that is other than white is probably about 11 or 12 or 13%.
You don't know off the top of your head.
And that's not, it's just not reflected here in these numbers. So I hope that we figure out a way to handle that piece of this better next year. But overall, it's very good. Overall, it's good.
Just, I would just want to make one other statistical comment. Point, 51%, so just a little over half of our staff. And while, you know, as, as Brian indicated, you know, that, that's a good survey response. I mean, it's, people have to go online, they have to take time out of their day to fill it in. But that's the other goal, I hope, that we as a district work to try to figure out how to get 100%. And how to communicate to staff that it's really their opportunity to help drive decision-making for the next year at the building level in particular, because the principals, I mean, that's their work plan for how are we moving forward? Again, where are the opportunities for improvement? What are the things we're doing great? And also at the district level as well. It's, it's so important that we hear from everybody. And this is a level, a communication tool that I hope that we see, number one, I hope we, moving forward, demonstrate to staff that we've taken their comments and concerns seriously, and that we are going to take action to try to move to improve some of those areas of improvement. But also that it's so important that we hear from everyone, so that we, so it can guide our decisions as to what we are setting for our goals as a board, and frankly, what we are setting with the superintendent for his goals and the goals of his staff each year. So, so that's, that's the, that's the other number that it would be great to see, 90-plus percent, 100%. Sam?
The number that really threw me was the one about the school board at 22%. Only because, and I have been a supporter, the custodian from the beginning. At the conference I was at in Green Bay a couple weeks ago, school perception did a presentation there, and they said that the community will listen to a custodian before they will a school board member. And this really hit home with me when, when I saw that. That's something we need to work on, and we need to really raise.
Any other comments with respect to the survey?
The one thing I wanted to note, again, we have new board members, we have a new superintendent. Clearly, one of the areas of concern with respect to our staff is pay. I mean, that, that comes out loud and clear. It's, it's the number one kind of priority, and it's the, the number one concern. And, and that doubles back and reflects on the school board, because at the end of the day, we're the ones there. And I want to note, because it's, it's, there were many years prior to Act 10 where there were significant, from a community perspective, increases that public sector staff received. And it's the way the economy was, it's the way the market was, it's the way the, the system was. Post Act 10, that's not the case. We as a district, and I think I've mentioned this before, we as a district, a year and a half ago, had still not settled a contract in our district post Act 10. So our staff had not received an increase post Act 10. I'm, I'm, there, there are all different sides to the story of why that was. And that's not my purpose in bringing it forward. My purpose in bringing it forward is, is the board, over a year and a half ago, made as a priority to get those contracts settled. And we did do that. But, but we did it within the district budget, which didn't have a lot of wiggle room post Act 10. And, and we still don't. We're still one of the, we're, we're becoming in the distinct minority of districts that have been able to operate within our budget without going to operating referendum. But, but part of the practical impacts of that are the contracts that we settled over the course of the last, well, the last year and a half, which was all the contracts since post Act 10. We settled one at 1 and 1/2%. We settled one at a half a percent. We settled one at 1%. We settled one at .62%. We just settled 15, 16 at .77%. We have offers on the table, and we'll be looking to settle a contract this evening, which is at CPI for this year, which is, is the highest amount we can go, and it's at .12%. So when I add all those numbers together, I come up with, over the course of six years, our staff will have seen an overall increase of 4.51, 4.51, which is somewhere in the range of a .7 something percent increase per year. I mean, the, the days of rich increases are long gone, and our, our staff are the ones who are bearing the reality of that. So it doesn't surprise me at all that there is a lot of concern with, with respect to pay. And, and the practical reality is that districts across the state are going to operating referendum to, to address this inevitable result of post Act 10. For example, Eau Claire just announced a 90 million, 15-year referendum, and the two focuses of that referendum are compensation and technology. And again, that's happening statewide. So, you know, it's the reality of where we're at. And we as a board are charged with governing and ensuring that we are living within our means. And currently, we're living within the means that the state of Wisconsin requires us to live within. We also, as a school board, I think, are charged, and we've talked about it, as to how do we, what are our tools, what are our opportunities to try to create a better picture and better opportunities for the Stevens Point district moving forward? It's one of our goals that we set for this year, and I know we're all serious about taking action to attempt to do what we can do.
Any other comments at all with respect to this one? Anyway, thank you, Sarah. That was a great presentation. Okay, we are moving on to item 8C, Student Services. C1, Wisconsin Act 125, Seclusion and Restraint Report. That's information only. Sarah, could you introduce yourself to the, everyone?
Sure. I'm Sarah. I'm the new Director of Student Services. Kind of came full circle. I did my undergrad here in Stevens Point, went down to Iowa to be a school psychologist for several years, came back to Wisconsin, worked for CISA 5, got to do some consulting for Stevens Point, then went on to work in a few other districts as Director of Student Services, and now I'm back in Stevens Point and Plover. So very happy to be back and have the opportunity to work with the district.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, so tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about Wisconsin Act 125 and our reporting requirements. In 2012, Wisconsin passed Act 125, which requires districts to report out the number of seclusions and number of restraints both our students in regular ed and students in special ed have received. So again, seclusion is only used in situations where there's a significant safety issue for either that particular student themselves, where they're self-injuring, or the safety of other students. And when a seclusion or restraint is done, there are requirements that we have as a district, and then requirements that we follow particularly for physical restraints. Our district uses nonviolent crisis intervention, which really emphasizes that verbal de-escalation first as much as possible. And then there's only approved restraints that we're allowed to use. So nothing that would ever restrict breathing or anything like that. So our reporting requirements then are to report out those numbers. So on the second page of the document you have, we have the total number of seclusions. For regular ed students, there were 43 occurrences, which were comprised of 12 students. And then for special ed, there were 341 occurrences comprised of 36 students. And then for restraints, we had 67 occurrences with 15 students comprising those numbers. And for special ed, there were 291 occurrences with 44 students comprising those numbers.
Sure. So looking at the number of students and the number of occurrences, I'm assuming that a number of them had multiple occurrences, correct?
Correct, yes.
So I know we talked about this a couple of meetings ago in Educational Services, having to do with our audit. But, you know, I'm, now that I see the numbers and I see the number of students, it, it begs the question, how, have you seen these same numbers for other districts? And how do we compare with other districts of similar size?
What's interesting about Act 125, it doesn't specifically outline exactly how you have to report the information. So what I've seen is districts report it slightly differently. There's not like a reporting template. This district happened to have a similar template to what I used in Jefferson, and Manona was similar to our numbers. I can't really compare because the district sizes are so different. I have done some research to try to find other districts in my prior positions to get comparables and just haven't been able to get them. What I've also found in board minutes is some districts aren't necessarily reporting out in some cases, at least that I could find in minutes. So I'm not even sure, you know, how that's followed up upon to make sure it's happening. So.
I, I, can I just say, I think that's really important information to have.
I agree.
And maybe, maybe you can't compare it directly, but maybe you can find like a, like a per capita or percentage-wise, you know, are we, is this normal? Are these numbers, is this what happens across the state? Or are we wildly out of line with how many students we're restraining? I, quite frankly, as, as a board member, I think that's important information for, at least for the board to know. And then for you as an administrator and in working with our staff, to be able to come up with appropriate policies in, in, in handling these difficult situations.
Yeah, it's something we could put forward to the policy committee of the uniform reporting.
Well, I think, I think that's going to be up to...
Yeah, I mean, I could try to get my hands on some. Like I said, it's going to be a little bit difficult because there's not that mandated template for reporting. I can certainly look after that. I will say, from my personal perspective, no amount of numbers are okay with me. I'd love to see that at zero, though that's probably never going to happen, unfortunately. What I will tell you is I did some looking into what the district has had as far as PD in the past. I know you had a speaker on trauma-informed care last year, and the input I got from principals was that they were really seeking out some follow-up to that particular presentation. And so I met with the elementary principals today, earlier today, and we talked about what that follow-up might look like. So we do have a, you know, working outline of follow-up that will be provided throughout the year for staff, particularly around trauma-informed care and what that is, and what trauma is, and impact on the brain. And then particularly, follow-up strategies on what teachers can do to kind of mitigate some of these situations before they get to the point of needing a seclusion or a restraint. We're also going to be looking at some training, again, just refresher around functional behavior assessments, really getting at root causes of behaviors, and then what you can do instead and replacement behaviors.
Good, thank you. I do, I guess I do want to make a, make a comment. I mean, I have heard from a number of educators within our district who have indicated, not just, not just teachers, but staff as well, that over the course of the last half of years, there have been increasing significant, serious behavioral issues within the classroom. And in fact, many of them have called out the last two years as very difficult. So I think it's also important, I mean, I think it's important that we as a board have that understanding and, and that recognition of, of alternate options. But, but I hope we as a district are also taking a look at that other side, which is how can we support and keep, frankly, safe our staff and provide the resources that we're able to in our district to, to allow some of these pressures to be addressed, not within the classroom, but, but by people who can focus in on that.
not within the classroom, but by people who can focus in on that? Because to be trying to teach, at the same time, you're trying to deal with all of the testing requirements and the paperwork you need to do, and at the same time, you're dealing with, frankly, one or two or three disruptions, serious disruptions in a day, takes a toll. I mean, and I think, I think we see that, frankly, in our climate survey because the number of the numbers, where low numbers were, you know, were, what our, what our staff is being asked to do. I mean, you know, in the course of their work. So again, I hope, I hope we're both looking at this from a student perspective, but we're also looking at it from what resources might make that day-to-day handling of this not something that we're requiring of our staff in the classroom.
And I would say concomitant with the increase in behaviors, we're also seeing the increase in the mental health needs, and those are really going hand in hand. And the nice thing about, at least what I've learned so far in this district, they've really followed the state outline for the mental health framework. And so I think, you know, as we continue to implement that and build supports around that with mental health providers in the schools, I would hope and agree with you that we, that wouldn't all be on a regular ed teacher's shoulders.
Any questions or other comments for Sarah? Welcome. Thank you very much. Okay, well, moving into item 8D, Technology, Board Docs Information.
So a little background on this. We've been working for the last year, over a year, at trying to get more efficient with our process for board packet creation in our workflow, and also the transparency for the public. The major challenge being, where do we have our documents, our minutes, our board packets? Anything that's been presented, where is that stored? And how searchable and accessible is that to the public? So we pursued a couple of options that were sort of low cost, if not free, to the district. Currently, we assemble the packets using email back and forth. We use PDFs. We looked at a product from Eo Johnson that was provided with our print packaging, our managed print contract. We came to the conclusion that really, we need to move to a more robust system, and that system is Board Docs. Board Docs is used by many districts throughout the state. It's endorsed by WASB. In fact, there's special pricing that WASB has achieved or received from Board Docs statewide. And we feel that by adopting Board Docs, we're going to be more efficient in our process. That means one person, specifically Sue, will have a lot more control over that workflow. They'll be more efficient. We're going to save a lot of time for our employees about how they put board packets together and what happens. We're also going to be more efficient with how you receive information, what you'll be able to do with it. And more importantly, we're going to be able to provide more transparency for the public. If they want to come and find a policy, minutes, a document, it's searchable, it's online, it's very easy to use. So I've listed some of the features that we're going to get with it. I mean, there's probably a list of 20 different things. I think I mentioned the most important reasons why. We just feel that this is the right thing to do, and we're at this point now where we need to do this. So we're not asking the board to vote on this. This is something that we strongly believe as an administration we need to go forward on. We did want to inform the board about why we're doing this and other information related to Board Docs.
Sam?
I was able to sit in on the presentation for Board Docs that WASB had. And I found it very interesting, and I fully support this. The cost of it, I don't know what the funds are available, that the board has in their own funds. We took some funds out of there for WASB, I think last meeting or the meeting before. And I would not be opposed to that money coming out of the board's funds, if available, if we had it available, because I think it's very important. I think it's something that will not only help the board and the district, but the community also.
I've used Board Docs, I've used Board Docs in my last two districts and implemented in the last two districts. And the first issue is, there's a cost to it. And really, the amount of time that we're going to save, it's worth that cost. But just the ability to move around within the board meeting itself, I find myself just stumbling right now. When we implement this, you'll find out it's very, very user-friendly. And you're able to click on each agenda item and click the boxes of all the material. And you can go back, and by just a click, you can go back to different pieces of material. You can quickly research a meeting a year ago to pull a document down. You can pull a policy. So I highly recommend the use of Board Docs specifically as a paperless board document. You'll find that within a, within a 45-minute professional development session, you'll be up and running and feel very comfortable with it. The cost will be an administrative cost that we will either pull out of the board, the school board, or the superintendent budget.
And I'll just note, just for the public, the implementation fee is $1,000. The annual license fee is $10,000. So the cost of this would be $11,000. Sounds like a great plan.
Yeah, I think it's correct. We will reap the rewards. The return on investment will be seen within a year in terms of the time saved. And it's hard to place, put a price on that transparency piece, too, which we're also trying to achieve. I will mention the fact that we've spent a lot of man-hours already trying to get a process to work that just can't do what this does. So it's worth it.
I also think, I'll note, the climate survey today, we had bad numbers with respect to staff access to policy and board information, and the public's saying that they want more information. So hopefully, this will be one piece of the solution to that concern.
Trish?
Can I ask you a couple of questions? First of all, will our old documents, our old policies, meeting minutes and so forth, will those be converted into Board Docs?
Yes, everything, though, I mean, there's no additional cost to that, which also is amazing. We could give them 20 years' worth of old data, if it's digitized, and they'll, they'll put it on Board Docs for us and make it searchable for us. And that includes video, minutes, packets, everything that we have.
And then do we, does that, does that data get stored here on a server that we have?
It's stored on Board Docs servers.
Okay, is there, okay, all right. And then, maybe Dr. Gerlick's already answered this, but are you going to do a training for us?
Yes, a training is included. I think Mr. Gerlick mentioned the 45-minute training. There is free training, so we would probably have someone from Board Docs actually do that or use a train, the trainer model, that hasn't been determined. Sue is going to be the project manager on this, so she'll be responsible for coordinating those efforts.
Okay, and last, but maybe most important, on the top of page two, one of the attributes that it has is that, "Follow me so governing body members will never get lost." What does that mean?
That's exactly as Mr. Gerlick referred to, is that you can see where you are in the agenda. So as, as you go through, you don't have to, right now with the PDF, I already found myself going up and down 100 pages. You'll be able to follow along what agenda item you're on and all the supporting documents in a sort of a two-column view, which is very easy to use.
I thought this was like, refer Versatran or something.
The agenda's always on the left-hand side.
You're going to put a chip in my head.
The wandering board member that we can't get back to.
I am, I am confident that after two meetings, you will all step back and say, wow, we should have done this years ago.
And I'll never get lost again.
Yep.
Never's a long time.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Brian. Okay, moving on to item 8E, Human Resources. Item one is Human Resources Committee Chair Report. Judy Rannell.
I am actually going to skip the report piece. We had a long discussion about lots of different things, and most of those are here tonight, so we'll just jump right into it. So the first one are recommendations for employment. And you see in your packet, there are two pages of recommendations for employment, resignations, alterations of contracts, retirement. So to get things started, I will move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on this.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Daley?
No.
Mr. Ebo?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Katos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
No.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannell?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Passes 7-2. Thank you. All right, moving on to item E2, or excuse me, E3, Employee Turnover and Exit Report. That's for information.
Yeah, we actually had a lot of discussion about this particular report, and it ties into some of what we've been talking about, the compensation, the pay increases, that type of thing. And we had asked for some additional information. So as of right now, we have a turnover rate in the district of about 10.13 percent. And some of the additional information that we had asked for were some of those themes. And one of the things that we had talked quite a bit about was being able to effectively retain employees with 10 or more years. We're able to do that. So we're really having an issue with the younger staff, the ones that have not been here as long, due to some of the reasons where Matt came and presented, and thank you for doing that, that discrepancy in pay or individuals without a pay plan not knowing where they're going. So that was a big discussion for us, looking at that, wanting to take a look and say, well, what can we do in order to improve that? And so while the last agenda item, we want to make sure that we have qualified teachers and we're bringing teachers in, we also need to take a look at what we're doing moving forward. So those were some of the discussions. If anybody else wants to add to that.
Comments?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to comment. I, you know, we had the same discussion last year about the exit interviews and about our turnover. And, you know, Florence assured us last year, I think we had a turnover of about 6 percent, that that was completely normal, and that that was, you know, an acceptable number of teachers leaving. This is, this is, quite frankly, to me, this is frightening, that we've got 10 percent of our staff leaving and so many teachers. On the second page, there's one line that I highlighted that is really concerning. 31 teachers left the district voluntarily. 21, so two-thirds, 21 of those teachers leaving the district voluntarily were employed five years or less. And so it's wonderful that we have these teachers that have been with us 12, 15, 20, 25 years. That's great. But our teachers that are building institutional knowledge and building our district and building our schools, they're leaving us. And this, this is, this is a frightening bit of information right here. I guess I would just add that, and I'm presuming that Florence is the one that put this together, this box, that, and I'll just, and you know, I'm going to hold this for the camera for just a second, because the summary of data here and then the comments that she makes are really concerning, and I think that she does a really good job of highlighting this. The district continues to run effectively, continues to effectively retain employees with 10 or more years of experience. However, the district saw nearly 68 percent of teachers with five years or less leave. Across exit surveys, lack of pay progression, pay plan in place for employees was a recurring theme for leaving. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I read this, and a couple of things came out to me that, number one, and you've already mentioned it, Dr. Gerlick, that you're moving the pay plan up to the top of your list of priorities. I think that's what you said a little while ago, earlier in our meeting. And the other piece of this is that we didn't get a lot of exit surveys. I think, and this is a far lesser point, that I'd like to see us do something. I'd like to see our HR department do something to incentivize doing exit surveys. And I'm not sure what large companies, like, I don't know, Century or the university, do to get people to fill out exit surveys. But this is, we have far more exit surveys this year than we had last year, which is great, but we need more. And we, we need, this is important information for how we move forward as a district to retain our most important product, our most important piece, which is our teachers, and as they produce our most important product, which are, of course, our students. So I'd like to see us, that's, of course, a far lesser priority, but we need to have a better return on these exit interview surveys.
I've talked to many staff members over the last month, and certainly this is an issue, whether they're informal conversations with individuals or, or members representing associations. It's a significant issue. The compensation or lack of a plan is one issue. We do have inequities that were pointed out today by Mr. Jakowski across the table. In talking with Florence, we could have 75 to 100 of those inequities. So it's not, it's not just fixing one. We've got to fix all of those. And so my, my process is to address the inequities first. A compensation plan as we continue to deal with that. But third, and the most significant, is sustainability. You know, that's, that's another issue that we have to deal with, and of course, that's a bigger picture when we get to that. I'm confident that we can come up with a plan. I'm confident we can, we can agree on what the inequities are. The issue is, then, is how do we sustain? Because we're going to have to pay for that. So there's, there's a lot at hand. We are losing staff members, young staff members. That's not uncommon. This is not necessarily a Stevens Point issue. We'll, we'll come up with a compensation plan. We'll fix our inequities. We'll figure out how to sustain this, so that, that could take some time. We'll still lose staff members. It's the business today, and there are, there are people that can move, and they're moving. That's not just here. When I left Jefferson last spring, we were losing people left and right, and they're the same positions. They're hard-to-fill positions. People are moving around because they can make more money by just moving. And that's, it's unfortunate, but that is happening. So we'll, we'll address these throughout the course of the year. I'm highly confident that we'll get there. We have to get there, but it's not necessarily going to change the fact that you're still going to have people that are going to be leaving.
Can I just follow up with one comment on that? And I appreciate your comments. I appreciate the direction that you're describing. But I think it's really important that when we talk about hiring people and we talk about investing in them with professional development certifications and so forth, we spend a lot of money getting our teachers to a point that where we feel that they are the best teacher that we can provide our students. And, and when we, when we, when we don't follow through and retain those people, we're, you know, it's, it's, we're kind of, what is the expression? Cutting off our nose to spite our face. We're, you know, we're spending a lot of money investing in certifications and additional training and consultants to come in and teach our teachers, and then we let them go because we haven't addressed one thing or another, and in particular, the payment plan. So I appreciate your comments, and I, 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 as one board member, want to see this become just our highest priority in the next few months.
Sam?
This is something you've probably never heard from me, or at least haven't heard from me for a long time. But most of the staff in the district know me and know where I stand and how I stand. I had a meeting with the superintendent prior to this meeting, and I can tell you 100 percent that I fully believe that he is going to be able to take this and work this out so that everyone is going to be happy with the compensation plan, with being where they should be. It's going to take a little bit of time, and it's going to take some effort. But it's something we have to all work together on. But this is the one time I can say that the superintendent has my full 100 percent backing that I believe what he's saying.
Judy?
Yeah, I want to chime in as well. I fully believe this is something that we need to address, and I'm glad that you've moved it up. So to me, being able to address the inequities, I understand people leave, and they will leave all the time. That's one reason I don't want people to leave. So if we can address the inequities in the pay scale, I think that would make me, as a board member, very happy, the educators happy, and it will actually attract people. So they'll be leaving, but at least they'll be leaving for a different reason besides inequities.
So I really like the fact that tonight we had not only the exit survey information, but the climate but the climate information, because while it's important to hear from people who are leaving, it's also incredibly important to pay attention to the people who are staying, and there's consistency, I mean, the reasons for leaving, including concerns with lack of progression in pay, and again, I talked about the contracts that we settled, and it hasn't been a lot of, you know, progression, you know, and other reasons included more testing requirements, disrespect of students and parents, and low morale in the buildings, again, something that we saw coming through the survey. So, again, while I think it's all important information, Craig started out the meeting by talking about the goals and objectives for this year, and the two we called out were pay plan, and inequities, and pay, so, and communication, 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 which we've been trying to move in a better direction over the course of the last year or so, so I guess our work is cut out for us, moving forward, and I think we all have a pretty clear understanding, and this has been a great meeting to be able to move into the new school year, and move into our next number of months of work as a board, as well as administration.
Okay, so item 8, excuse me, yeah, 8E4 is Update on Labor Negotiations for 2015-16 for Teamsters General Local, and 2016-2017 for Ask Me Local 309, SPAEA, and Teamsters General Union Local 662, and this is information. We've got Florence here tonight, Florence, you want to give us a little update?
So, this was another place that we talked about, so as we talked about compensation and that kind of thing, as you alluded to, we wanted to get these contracts settled before we even moved anywhere with anything else, we couldn't have a pay plan until this was done, and we are almost there.
Thank you, Judy's done a wonderful job, there's not much more I can say beyond that, so we, we've reached out to AFSMI and SPAEA for dates, we have not been able to secure dates as of yet, I did hear back from the bargaining representative for AFSMI, and they are working on dates with his team, so that we can meet and get together, but don't have specific dates yet with SPAEA to date, I have not heard anything back specifically as far as dates that they would have available to meet so far this year. We have met with the Teamsters, and we've reached tentative agreements on both the 2015-16 school year, as well as the 2016-17 school year, and you have that tentative agreement in front of you with what was agreed upon between both groups, for 15-16, it's the .77% across-the-board increase, and for 16-17, it's the .12% increase, plus a change in the wait, well, it's no longer wait time, what was happening was when the drivers would take field trips, they would have two separate rates of pay, they would have the drive time rate of pay, and then a waiting time rate of pay while they were on the field trip, so what we did was combine that, so that there's just one rate for the field trips, the bus field trips that they have, and we reached that tentative agreement with that, and we, it's just been a pleasure working with the Teamsters, just really enjoyed it, and then coming to that agreement, and they will be meeting to ratify the contract on August 24th, and their bargaining team will take these agreements to them with a recommendation for approval.
So, I want to note, Florence has been making efforts to get dates for meetings for initial exchange, we're required to do that by law, and again, it's summer, you know, it's tough, it's tough to pull people together. We have indicated, you know, the best-case scenario is if we could get those contracts settled by the end of this month, and we could go into the new school year with everybody receiving the paychecks with everything, you know, I mean, that's the best-case scenario, we have indicated, and I just want to make board members aware, that, you know, if for some reason, that can happen, again, we're looking at 16-17, CPI is .12, that's what we're offering, so, I mean, we're there, I mean, there's not, we can't do anything else by, by, anyway, in the infinite wisdom of the legislature. So, if we can do that, if for some reason, we can get those dates together, we can get some meetings, we can get those offers on the table, and the unions are open to it, we may be asking board members to come for a special meeting at the end of the month, because if there's some way we can get this done before we move into the year, we want to try to do that.
And Florence, you haven't heard from either then about dates?
Correct, either AFSMI or SPAEA.
Okay.
For specific dates, for specific dates.
Ask Me is reaching, is trying to get some dates from them.
Yes, they have reached out, but they haven't sent specific dates.
Oh, okay. But nothing from SPAEA?
Not as far as dates, but I do know that the bargaining representative, Josh Scoobal, has been on vacation, the teachers are just now returning, so it's, you know.
So, there's still hope, we can get it done?
Yes.
I'm very hopeful.
I would like to note that it's very hard when we have a CPI to offer, and we can't go above that, but the state of Wisconsin doesn't even give us the equivalency in revenue to meet that value.
Okay, thank you, Florence, you might as well stay there for this next one, which is the 8E5 Ratification of 2015-16 and 2016-17 Collective Bargaining Agreements between the Stevens Point Area School District and the Teamsters General Union Local Number 662. We would need to take two motions on these, we need to approve the contracts separately, and I'm asking Florence to stay, just in case anybody has any questions on either of them. So, could I have a motion with respect to the 2015-2016?
Removed.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
I do have a question, point number three, or point number two and point number three, eliminate waiting time upon ratification of agreement, what does that mean?
That's 2016-2017.
Okay.
Okay, so first, we're doing 2015-2016.
Got it, okay, all right.
Okay, so, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebo?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Mr. Katos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Okay, and then, could I have a motion to ratify the 2016-2017 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the district and the Teamsters as stated above?
Move for approval. Second.
Okay, discussion, Trish?
What is eliminate waiting time and adjust the bus field trip rate from 14:01 to 13:80? Could you explain those two things?
Yes, as I said before, for the 16-17 agreement, what the drivers did previously was there were two different rates when they would take a field trip, there was the bus field trip time, and then the waiting time, so they would drive to whatever the event was, and then they would wait, and they would have two separate rates that they would have to put into the system to be paid. So, in discussions with the Teamsters, we were able to come to one rate for the field trip time, and eliminate them needing to punch in, out, and then in, out for wait time, and then in, out again for the bus field trip time, for what they were driving, and we were thereby able to eliminate the waiting time category, because there's now just one rate when they take a field trip.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, and that bus field trip rate went from 14:01 per hour to 13:80 per hour, or will upon ratification of the agreement. Any other discussion or questions on this one? Could you call the rolls?
Mr. Katos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebo?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Okay, we will move into item 9A, Board Meetings, again, just, we could potentially have another meeting this month, we'll let you know if that's going to be the case, otherwise, we have this meetings coming up on September 12th, October 10th, and November 14th, and then, item 9B is Recommendation to Move Educational Services Committee and Human Resources Committee Meetings to Wednesday, September 7th, 2016, Monday, September 5th is Labor Day. The reason that we're moving the Mondays to Wednesday is because people that are on committees, there are a number of people who can't make Tuesday meetings, so we thought we'll keep the Tuesday meetings the same, and then move the Monday meetings.
That works for me, that works for you.
So, could I have a motion to approve that?
I will move to approve the change from Monday, September 6th, no, September 5th, right? To Wednesday, September 7th, Educational Services and Human Resources.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, post? And Sue, could you make sure to let our, the citizen members on those committees know ASAP? And I did want to call out a thank you to, I want to call out a thank you to the citizen members that stepped up to serve on the committee this year. I think, again, we're going to have a very good year, all of them immediately contributing, contributed substantively on their committees, so we look forward to a good year, and again, thank them for helping us out.
All right, just a question, what was the date, Trish, that you moved to, from where to where?
From the 5th to the 7th.
Okay, because I'm looking at the date lines, and it's showing the star, and we just have a date may change, but we don't have the dates on here, on your...
You'll change it off.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm letting everyone know that hasn't been changed on here for your dateline that got handed out, just for the people to know.
Okay, item 10, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So?
Second, okay, tie. Pick out one or the other, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.